In order. Could we please have a roll call? I'm here. Uh, okay, uh, this is a time for public comment. It's a special meeting, so the comments would be for matters that are not on the agenda. Or sorry, on the agenda. Anybody have a public comment? We have people online and Anthony, you'll let me know if anybody online has public comment. Okay, so, uh, we'll move on to the first item on the agenda, which is council discussion of priorities and next steps for the housing element.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is, uh, on the agenda purely as a discussion item through our, for a free form conversation of the council. Uh, after several public meetings and review, the draft element was authorized for release back in July and was submitted to the state on August second. Uh, once HCD provides feedback, the town will need review, turn need to review that feedback and make any potential revisions to that element over the next sixty to ninety days. The housing element must then be resubmitted to the state no later than the statutory deadline of January thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. This is an opportunity to, to allow the council have a free form discussion around priorities, issues, focus, what you think the needs are, where your vision for the community with respect to the housing element is as part of this process. No action would be taken on this item.
Great, okay, and as we have done a couple of previous times with respect to this housing element, I, I think the best way to handle public comment is to let the council have, um, we'll, we'll take a public comment if someone has a uh, an urgent comment they'd like to make right away, but I'd like to let the council, uh, engage in the discussion, share their thoughts. Uh, I think that might generate some public comments, so I'll open up a session of public comment after the council's talk. So if anyone has an urgent public comment they want to make at the beginning, that it now would be fine time. Okay, not saying that, comments from the council. This is just that, the idea here, I think, is a free flow of thoughts of what each of us thinks about how we're going to approach the housing element. We know we've got an initial draft submitted. We know we're going to get reactions on that by the end of October. And we know it'll be an iterative process and no doubt there'll be several iterations, but uh, the first one's going to be important and I think our target is to have that next response in, in January.
Yeah, I have a question. To date, uh, let's see, we're what, six weeks into our submission? Has there been any feedback at all from HCD? Other than they've received our, uh, plan and, uh, they'll get back to us.
I don't believe so. I think Lisa Costa Sanders is on the Zoom meeting. Lisa, have you had any other additional feedback other than we've received? The plan and have we, do we know who the examiner is or anything like that?
Uh, we have not received feedback, um, and we can, they've confirmed receipt. And I don't believe we've been assigned the reviewer yet. We anticipate receiving a phone call at the sixty day mark where we would get some verbal comments and then the formal letter at the ninety day mark.
So at this point, we don't have like any sense of how our plan is being received.
Right.
Except for maybe, uh, ancillary, um, uh, information from what other jurisdictions are receiving comments on.
Correct. And, and I think just to-
I can talk louder too.
The, the Housing Leadership Council, is that the one you're referring to? That, that, they were actually mentioned in a response that Redwood City received, which is why we believe HCD does pay attention to their comments.
So just to give it some context, uh, I mean, they haven't responded to us, but there are other several other Northern California municipalities, as, as we all know, because we've read about it, who have submitted and earned exactly the same timeframe as we are, uh. But they are also now eleven months past the deadline in Southern California for LA and Orange Counties and of the hundred and twenty-five jurisdictions, only ten have been qualified. So they have got to be up to their eyeballs in dealing with those other hundred and fifteen municipalities that are now eleven months behind the deadline, and I'm sure that's something that HCD is focused on.
Do we know if any other cities have proposed a primarily ADU approach like us?
There have been a couple in Southern California. I don't know them off the top of my head, but there's, there have been some that are have a focus on ADUs and I think some up here.
Monte Sereno.
Yeah, some up here like Monte Sereno also have a focus on ADUs, but again, they haven't received responses yet.
So we don't know if it flies.
So, um, the request was to provide a plan for three forty-eight, provided a plan for four oh four. Um, of course, some of the history on some of the ADUs is not, uh, you know, doesn't support all of what we'd said, however. You know, the concept of ADUs are just really getting started, we're communicating it to the community. There are probably housing items that are out there we discussed previously, such as pool houses or things like that that have been converted, that we have not yet counted. I think the, the importance for us today is, is to make sure that we have a handle on actually what we have out there. Make sure that we find a way to reach out to the community and talk to them about ADUs, because there still may be some misunderstandings. Um, and make sure we have a good count, um, not only of who's renting and at what levels, but also where, where ADUs possibly exist that we don't know about. And that's just to get in preparation, uh, for any sort of response, but right now I believe that what we turned in was, was not only supported by the council, but also supported by the community, and I think that you know, that, that was our best shot. Now, could the Water District possibly do more up in their location? Maybe we could probably talk to them. Could, could the schools actually come up with firmer plans? Maybe we can continue to talk to them, but I think our plan was a good plan. And, and it, uh, most importantly, it's supported by the community, so um, I can't see us doing anything else with regards to, oh, let's do this or let's do that because we've got the plan, we don't have any input. And I believe that there are, as we've discussed before, more, more ADUs and pool houses that have been converted, that have people living in them that we don't know about. And I think the effort now should be to identify what those are so that we can then continue to support to the, to HCD. Hey, look, we, we have all this and we've got it, we've got it. Excuse me, we got it covered. So that's, that's, uh, you know, the discussions that I've had with, with George and also with, with the mayor, um, full disclosure. And I think that that's, that's where we should be. That's my two cents.
Let me push that out a little bit and share my thoughts and, and I'm really interested in hearing what other members of the council think and what members of the public think. Uh, this is a really important issue for us. We all know it. This is the biggest issue before us over the next eighteen months. It's a really big issue. We got more responses from the Atherton electorate on this issue than we've ever gotten on any issue in my last nine years and probably that's by nearly an order of magnitude. We got three hundred emails. That, that dwarfs anything else we got. So, and, and I think we've had good discussion, uh, since May on this. Uh, th- this is the way I think about it. We principally asserted that we can meet the three hundred and forty-eight number and in fact exceed it with accessory dwelling units and with development, including multi uh, a denser development on the schools. And that the schools have a tremendous need for that to provide housing to staff and teachers. And schools are a huge part of Atherton. We have seven schools. Our population doubles every school day. We have a very large number of people coming into our town to work in those schools. So it's important for us to work with, with those schools to help them build that housing. And that type of housing has been built in San Mateo County, right? Well, I think we all are aware that Los, uh, that, uh, uh, San Bruno just opened a very significant complex for teacher housing, uh, uh, built on a parking lot and there were like a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and fifty units. So I think that's a really big deal. The way I look at it is that HCD essentially has a default analysis or methodology that they use to judge each different type of housing that a municipality would propose. And we've principally hung our hats on ADUs and, uh, school housing. And we, we know what their default for ADUs is. It's they take the last four years. They average how many new ADUs you've built in those last four years. And that's their default of what they expect you to build over the next eight years. And that as a default, they will accept, and we've proposed quite a bit more than that. Uh, so I think, and, and I think we have good reason to propose more than that. But I think to be able to win the argument with them and convince them not to use their default methodology in determining how many ADUs we can build, we have to present real factual evidence to support our assertion that we can build substantially more than the default number. Uh, and I think that, and I, that, that this, uh, gets to the later conversation that we're going to have, the second agenda item tonight, but I think that that's really incumbent on us to figure out how we can establish an assertion that we can support with factual backup that will be convincing enough to convince them not to use the default methodology that they've determined is appropriate based on their past experience. Uh, and, and I think the best way that we can do that is that we can get actual commitments or, or at least statements of intention of residents to either build ADUs or to convert existing pool houses or other accessory structures that don't qualify as an ADU to an ADU. And, and I, as an example, I have a guest house that, uh, has a bedroom and a bathroom and a, and a living room. It's a, it's a one bedroom unit, doesn't have a kitchen. If I put a kitchen in it, that would qualify as an ADU and we, we, we would be able to count that in our housing element. And I think one of the things that we can use in reaching out to our residents to convince them that they should make that statement of intention is that one, one of the changes that is a hat, that's happened in Atherton in the last ten years is that if you build an ADU, the square footage of that ADU, and that has to qualify as an ADU, but that square footage of the ADU doesn't count against your total square footage. That's the maximum square footage you can put on your property. That's a serious benefit to residents. And I don't think residents know about it. So I think we need to build a program where we're going to go out to residents, explain the information to them and get back a statement of intent to, to do it from some hundreds of residents that will support us to go to HCD and say, we actually can build thirty-five or more ADUs a year and here's two hundred or three hundred statements of interest from residents that say they'll do it. So Elizabeth then Bill.
I applaud that, um, thought process. Uh, I think that, uh, that's something that we all would agree that we need to kind of work towards. However, I, going back to my first question, we have not heard anything back from HCD. And the assumption of that we're making is that they have a default and-
Well, we know they have the default.
Staff had early conversations before submitted with HCD about our ADU assumptions.
Okay.
And one of the, some of that early feedback was, um, they're not going to use the last two years or the last year as our example of what we can do with ADUs. They're going to go back, look at a longer stretch of time and extrapolate an average from that.
Okay, so clearly, the, the whole concept of building ADUs, I mean, is not, um, it's not a real recent one, but it's not a long term, you know, one that we did. I remember our last housing element, we talked about doing ADUs and we changed our building code to allow if you bought, built a new house and you put, uh, an H- ADU within your buildable area, that square footage, I think is eight hundred square feet, is the maximum that that ADU could, uh, be. Would not count for your other, uh, buildable area square footage. So that, we did take steps to do that and tried to roll that out as we could with people coming under the, I mean, uh, plan. Um, and so I, I guess, um, the timing of doing the outreach and getting the residents to, to, uh, make these a- affirmative statements. I mean, we're going to collect that, but we're not going to resubmit until we hear back from them. Is that your, you're just following-
Absolutely. I mean, it's going to take us
Yes.
Quite some time to put a program together. Uh, we're going to need help from residents to do it. We want to make sure that it is, uh, within the range of what residents want. I, it, I, I don't think we would be submitting anything until we hear back from HCD.
My follow-on question is, would these residents be required to give their name, address and, you know, uh, location of this, you know, ADU or existing ADU or proposed conversion? And would then that become a public document?
Anything that they submit to the town with their name, address, phone number, et cetera, is all considered a public record. That's disclosed under Public Records Act. Uh, what doesn't have to happen, depending on how we do that process, is if it's not a part of a public comment period, or it's not something we're going to submit in bulk to HCD, then it's not on the town's website and that sort of thing. Uh, if it's just, we're collecting data and we're going to use the summation of that data as our argument to HCD, then they're, they're not connected with it in that way.
Would HCD, uh, accept that summation instead of?
Oh, no.
Well, I think that's a, that's something that we need to flesh out. But, but I, I think if we're really, I mean, and obviously our general, our, um, plan, housing plan is based pretty much, um, heavily weighted for ADUs. Um, and then the, the schools that we know that they need to, um, get behind, um, development, but that seems to be, they haven't sent us the letters yet.
Yeah, uh, th- there's two parts to the housing as well. You know, one part is getting the, the, uh, housing elements established, which I think that we've got a plan for. And we need to, you know, keep moving forward on that. The other thing is identifying, um, renters. And so, you know, we're in a unique area where we have Stanford. Graduate students don't live on campus for the most part, you know, just do post, uh, postdoctorial students. We have, there are a lot of students over at Menlo College that are renting or the college is renting space for them. So I think we also are going to need, once we identify where these ADUs are, we need a program to get some sort of outreach for them so that they're, they're rented and we can count them. Because it's not just build, it's also get people in them of different income levels. Some of the income levels could be, I have a family member living there, but some of them could be, I have a student and, you know, he's paying a thousand dollars because that's all he can afford. So I think that there's really a two-pronged, uh, approach that we should probably be considering. Um, I think also because of the, uh, the great, uh, response that we've had, um, I think it would be prudent for the town to have another, you know, all resident session where we can talk to them about what we're doing, we can talk to them about what our plan is. If we have any input by, by then, which we probably will not, we, you know, we could also pass that along. But, um, you know, this is, this is a town project and a town commitment. And we need, we need the community to actually participate in that. And I think that, uh, that's one of the things that I, I recommend that maybe by the end of September or the first week in October, after all the back to school nights are done, that we have, we have a, a session here uh, where we can have the residents come and also provide their input. So, thank you.
Sorry, can you clarify what the two-pronged approach is?
Well, with the, the first prong is, is to, as you pointed out, energize people to understand really, uh, you know, what the issues are with regards to building an ADU and to, to be comfortable in doing that and, and provide in, interest for doing an ADU or an SB nine lot split. So that's prong one. The next prong, which has to follow closely, is to get somebody in those as they're built. Or if they're already existing, because it was a pool house, it's been converted, but we didn't know about it. Also get somebody in there. So associated with that second item that I mentioned, I think that, uh, the town needs to really go through where we've done permitting and, and start to identify where potentially would, there may be an ADU, but we just don't know about it, so we can count it.
Well, I was going to talk about teacher housing, which I still want to, but, um, on that topic of counting, George gave us some notes about how difficult it is to actually count. And I don't know who does that or whether we need to set a task force or assign money for that, or how, how does that actually work?
Actually got staff working on that now. Uh, the building department folks are going to start going through that. It'll take them a little while because there's-
With the microfishing and the whole thing.
Information to go through. And if we need some assistance through, you know, a part timer or somebody else to come in and do that, we'll, we'll make sure that happens.
But there's only twenty-five hundred parcels or probably less to actually go through. So it's not like, you know, a Redwood City that you have to call through, you know, sixty thousand.
But if you go, it, it takes a half an hour per parcel to go through it and figure it out. That's thirteen hundred hours. So it's more than a, a half year's worth of work for one person.
For one person, well, yeah.
So do we have people to do that and that's in the works?
We, we have building staff that are going to be going through the- Well, we have a building staff that'll go through the E-track it permits. And then they also know how to correlate the E-track it to the microfishing, to the backup data and make sure that the, as we were talking about earlier, that the permit that's pulled for a conversion of a cabana, for example, includes the kitchen and includes this, that, that turns it into an ADU, which makes it uncountable. And when did that occur? And did we already count it as a unit and that sort of thing? So there are staff that are able to do that.
Not, is not a big, is not going to be a big expense.
No.
So I think that's-
It's just time.
I, I just to add, I, we're not cutting new ground. There are other communities that are looking at exactly the same thing. I know Monte Sereno has already sent out a letter to their residents that's asked the residents to state if they have an intention to build an ADU because they're a hundred percent focused on ADUs to satisfying their housing element requirement. And I'm certain there's other cities. Uh, so I think we can look at what others are doing and we can put together a program that can do this. Bob, did you ever?
Yeah, there's, this is not on ADUs and I know that's our primary thing, but on teacher housing, there is one area we haven't addressed, which is public schools. And we, all of our thing addresses private schools. And there's funding, there's grants, there's things like that happening around us that I'd like to see our city plug into. For example, uh, Joe Smitty was saying that they're going to, the county's going to put in for three teacher housing projects. And he asks, are you ready for yours? And we're not ready. You know, we don't have a place or a site and all the ones that we have are all private schools and I don't know if they qualify. And each of our public schools is in a different school district, so it's not a simple thing. I started down this path. I don't personally know how to do it, but we need to, we need, that's one last avenue that we need to go down is to understand how we can get queued up with, uh, at the different educational departments so that we're in the queue and to see if they even have space or need, because we haven't had that communication. I reached out to this, what was the Suby Lane School? And, uh, they basically said you have to go up. You can't go to the school direct. You have to go up to the county. So I haven't gotten very far on that. So if there's collective wisdom here that knows more how to do that, it would be useful, especially like the Stanford money that we, not that we missed it, but it's, you know, it's going to be allotted somewhere else. So there may be other things like that, that we don't know about yet.
You know, the public school system is, you're right, we've got three different districts. We've got Safoya, Menlo and Los Lomitas. I mean, you know, all those, but you have to also look at whether or not they do have the room on their grounds. I mean, Encinal certainly would not have any room. They, you know, they barely have room for any, you know, drive-in parking. And, you know, so you just, you know, Menlo Atherton may have, um, that, um, that the school that kind of continues to jump up to me would be Menlo College. And I think they would be very receptive to building on one of their-
Well, yeah, we have that and we have men, we have the private schools all in. But we haven't, and we haven't even met with them.
If they were to build, perhaps they could build something on the next, of night, of next level up and, and build something, you know, for residents. And we did mention Encinal and Laurel and Elizabeth right, so brought up. It, it doesn't have the space, but we did mention several meetings ago that public schools should be included in that. We should contact the superintendents and just say, you know, if you have plans or it might be something, we'd have to work with you. Although they don't have to go through the town. You know, they have their own chain of command, which is why parking and turnaround stuff is all messed up.
But I spoke, I spoke to one superintendent and I'm finding it's above the superintendent. But it, there is funding, there's, they can, you can get, uh, grants to pay for the rent of the teachers once it's built.
Yeah.
And with, there are some in the works. I just don't know how to get our city in the pipe. Because we miss the opportunity for those other ones and the money's going to go somewhere else. Not that that was a huge amount of money and solve our problems, but we need to somehow get in the pipe. If that means meeting above, um, but it's above the superintendent. It, we can't, the superintendents can't make this decision. That's what I found at least at the Suby Lane School.
You know, the various school boards, that's where you have to go, because they make the decisions.
Council, if I could ask, give us some feedback online to just make sure we're talking into our mics or getting a little closer to you.
Okay, other comments?
I do have one public comment question.
Okay, let's take public comment now, let people, if anyone has a comment, go ahead.
So they just, uh, they want to know if there's a penalty for any unapproved ADUs. So if we determine that they are ADUs after the fact, are there any penalties?
Wait, I, I don't understand.
Somebody built an ADU.
Well, George, no, no, there, no, the, the, the issue, as I understand it, the issue with an ADU is, is an ADU is a housing unit that includes a living space, a bathroom space and a kitchen space. And it has to be at least eight hundred feet and Atherton, it can be up to twelve hundred feet. Irregardless of what square footage it is, if it's permitted, a hundred percent of that square footage up to the twelve hundred feet is, uh, is beyond the maximum of the amount of square footage you can build. If, if somebody has done construction that they didn't get a permit for, then it's not a qualified ADU. It may be able to be qualified. I think there's a whole series of things we've talked about that we need to do to support additional ADU development. One of them is, we've talked about waiving the fee to build an ADU. Uh, we've talked about changing the height restrict, or the, or the, the ability of to put an ADU over a garage, uh, uh, and I think one thing we could talk about is if somebody actually has built, you know, whatever, a bathroom or a kitchen that they didn't get a permit for, then, uh, maybe we could, we haven't talked about that yet, but I, some communities have grandfathered that, I believe.
Well, they still have to get the permit.
Yeah.
Right.
Inspected that it is to code and, you know, safe, the safety standards have to be.
Yeah.
So a- as far as a penalty or something, there may be additional costs. If you put something in that you didn't get a permit or you didn't do it, I don't know, according to the codes.
Right.
So then we buyer beware, a little bit.
I mean, I think that, that the idea of asking residents if they have an intent to build an ADU or to alter whatever, a pool house or other accessory structure and to make it an ADU, if they state that they have the intent to do that and then they don't do it, there's absolutely no penalty. There, there's no- There, there's no commitment and, and no ironclad obligation here. It, but it's a statement of intent that we can use. To show that there's an interest to do the development, uh, when we go to HCD.
And I think we should also count if people are renting rooms. But they don't, they have not built an official JADU or separated off. Somehow we need to collect that information and we need to keep it in our rental information. But we also should be, you know, reporting that is maybe, maybe the state doesn't wanna count that, but I, you know, it's the same thing with the dorm rooms. You, you, you take a student out of an apartment, you put him in the dorm, he goes to a cafeteria to eat. You know. I don't, I don't really see what the difference is really. I, I think it's absolutely crazy.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Okay, I don't see any public comment. Do you? Other thoughts?
I don't know. I, I really agree with your approach. Um, my only other thought would be that. Until we hear. I don't want to do anything that has the appearance of us second guessing our. Housing plan because I believe that we put together a very sound plan. I believe all the arguments and the narratives around it are, should be convincing. If HDC CD does not like that, then we need to hear from them. Now. I don't know what our timing is. I mean, once we hear back from them. Do we have the luxury of then putting together this whole big push? For the community to go to the community and say, look, they did not accept our plan. And they're wanting us to do this and this and this unless we can prove that our plan. By virtue of you saying that you're gonna, you know, support all these ADU constructions. Then, you know, to do that, I don't know what our timeframe, like Rick said, you know, they're eleven months behind. The approval of, so these hundreds of, you know, other plans. So, you know, what's the timing of all of that?
The, the timing is statutory, so we, we have to submit when we have to submit. But. In terms of them being behind in those Southern California agencies, they're already in that process. So they've submitted, they're getting comments, they're providing another iteration and. Another opportunity for review. So that'll continue anyway. It's not that they haven't submitted and they're just still working on their plan. They're, they're already in the HCD process of review. But, uh. The, we, uh, sorry, I lost my train of thought there.
Yeah, well, we identified two concrete things that we were talking about doing. One is doing the counting. And that's something we can do while we're waiting. That doesn't, you know, we can start that now because we are in a time crunch, no way around it. And the second thing is, do we actually make the effort to start to get? The letters of, of intent like you were talking about, because that's also time intensive. So if they were to push back, we would have, we'd be armed already with our response. Because time is of essence here. If we have to respond back to what they say, we, it'd be nice to have evidence to respond back.
I remembered my train of thought. It was, um, we have some, uh, we, uh. Good city company, uh, contracted with someone to assist the town who's very, uh, engaged with HCD over the years. And one of the recent comments that this individual said was that with the governor's recent budget, HCD has staffed up considerably. To address housing element issues. So they no longer have an understaffing issue. So they'll be able to address ours. One of the concerns was where they got that staffing from. And then many of those staff may have come from housing advocacy groups and others that have, uh.
So they're staffing the debt.
To some degree, it could look that way.
So do we take, do we step forward with any of the things that we're talking about? We identified some concrete things we can do to support what we've already submitted. Should we take action now to start that? Uh, I mean, we all agree that we don't wanna do anything new. We've submitted what we think is a good plan. But do we start to get back up for what we've already done?
Diana, I think that we, the first thing we need to do is we need to have, invite the town to the park and talk to them about what's in the plan. So yes. There's like four hundred people or homes. That personally got involved in writing about this, reading the report and things like that. I'm sure there were a few others. But we've got a lot more homes in here than that. Okay? And so I, I would, I would think that we need to get more people energized about this. And have them understand what it is that we've got, what we submitted. And then talk to them about ADUs and what the situation is and, and SB nine lot splits, you know, that, that they're continuing to rise. There's, you know, potential of now eleven in town and so it's gonna continue. And, uh, you know, I think that that's, that's step one. The other step would be, once George does his assessment. If he needs any sort of a extra budget to go through these permits. I think that that's, you know, to understand what we have potentially that we, that we didn't know we had. Then I think that that's step two. And, and that can be done right now as well.
In terms of having those public meetings, we all agree on that. But if we have a public ask, those public meetings are the venue to do it. So one of our most powerful venues to do it. So if we were, wanted to go out and say. We would love you to give us a letter of intent, doing it that public venue with those people there would be a very powerful way to get that. Yeah, we still need to organize it. We need to do the mailing and we all agree on that. But if there's an ask, if there's something that we know we're gonna want. Let's use that opportunity to be, it clearly has to be informational because a lot of people don't know all this. But if there's an ask, let's be ready for the ask when they're all there.
Well, I think to be able to put together a program. That is comprehensive and that can be described to residents. And convincing the residents that it's in their best interests. Uh, to build an ADU or to alter a pool house to qualify it as an ADU. Is gonna take some work. We have to describe what that is going to be, why that is in the residents' best interest. Both because it gives them additional square footage on their property. And it satisfies our housing element without increasing density in Atherton. And if we don't plan for that, we're gonna, this is gonna take more than two or three months. This is gonna take time. And it, and it's gonna need to be aired to residents before we go out with it. So the residents have input in it. It's gonna take time. Uh, I think, and, and there, like I said, Monte Serena's already done it. So we have some forms we can use. If we wait until we hear from HCD to do one thing, we're, we're not gonna do it. It's not gonna happen.
We won't make our deadlines.
We won't make our deadlines and we, we won't have put a program together by January because it's gonna, I think it's gonna take three months to put it together. And that's gonna be, and that's gonna be after HCD comes back to us. This is not just a. You know, thirty minute meeting to talk about it. This is a comprehensive program.
Who's gonna do that? Who's gonna? The message.
I don't, uh, I don't necessarily agree that building three hundred and forty eight ADUs. Isn't gonna add congestion and. Lots of problems in, in the town of Atherton. Three hundred and forty eight living units with possibly twice that many cars. It, it, it goes on and on and on. So, um. I thought a part of this would be to determine what our options were. If in fact, we can't build three hundred and forty eight units or four hundred and four units with our existing plan. Of which the elephant in the room is multifamily. Elizabeth makes a good point. We start talking about a mu- multifamily option as I am doing right now. That could play against us at the HCD level if we're dumb enough to think they actually view these meetings, but maybe they do. But, uh. Are you guys been saying you don't even wanna discuss that and start looking at what? What that, those options could be because you don't wanna undermine our existing plan? I just wanna know. Cause I personally don't think our plan is feasible, nor do I think it's, uh. As, as community friendly as, as you all seem to think it is.
I'll just.
Go ahead.
Add to that. I, I don't think what we're saying is we're gonna build. Three hundred and forty eight ADUs because there are other components of the plan that add up to that and a hundred, four hundred and four. I think. Well, I, I think SB nine is like the most owners of them all. Personally, because I think there's so many unintended consequences of that. But, you know, there's the schools and this and that. But I think that, uh, uh, what I hear us trying to do. Is to, uh, do the community outreach for the ADUs to be able to justify. What we put into our plan. Because from what Rick is saying and Georgia's saying is that the default. That HCD is, uh, using the default position is not to say, okay, well. You started out four years ago with this many low and you've increased every year. And now. I mean, even though your average might have been thirty three or the last couple of years thirty three. And now we're saying we're gonna do thirty five or more over the next eight years. Um, they're gonna say, we're not, we're not going to, uh, believe that. And so what we're trying to do is say, if we get enough residents. Say that over the next eight years, I would consider building an ADU. And so that gives more credence to. And, um, weight to our, uh, plan. Not that the whole plan is. Three hundred and forty eight or four hundred and four of ADUs because there's lots of other variables in it. And I think that if we start trying to talk about. Uh, high density overlays at this time, uh, we would start undercutting our plan.
And remember, the ADU plan is over eight years.
Over eight years, yeah.
Over eight years. But if they do a four year average, then we're under. And so what, what the discussion has been. At this point in time was to say, well.
You're talking to yourself.
I guess I said, maybe Siri was jumping. But anyway, I, I think that, uh, the discussion was, well, you know, if they do this four year average, then the number is really like twenty two. And, and, uh, so we'd say, well, we, we believe that the number of ADUs is growing. And so here's some proof that people are really interested in doing that. And oh, by the way, then also find some that have become ADUs. That we didn't know about and count them as well. So I think that that's. You know, the community wanted a special, you know, gave us input on the type of plan that they wanted. And I think that at this point in time, we need to continue to support that. And I think that we need to, you know. Anticipate a question on the number. And, and, you know, and find some way to support that. Um, I'm not in favor at this point in time to say, what are the alternatives that could we look at? I just, I just don't think it's, uh, the appropriate thing at this time, but we can get input from the community when we have the community, you know, community meeting. I mean, that could be one thing that they could opine.
That's why I, why I asked the question. You and Elizabeth are on that page and I believe Rick's on that page. That's all I wanna know.
I think that there is a risk. I, I think what you said, and I applaud you for bringing that up. We are supporting what we have in. And someone might argue that the timeframe's really tight. So if it were me, I'd be thinking plan A, B and C. But we're not doing that because we want to support what you said. We're, we wanna support what's in right now. And do we have enough venue to get feedback and then do the process, which is a logical process of have a plan B in your back pocket? I don't know. When do we do plan B if we get the bad feedback? I don't know.
So can we also continue to work with the college and the school to, you know, beef up their potential commitments? Now, you know, we know the college has said that they would love to do something. They just don't have the financing. You know, so if we, I mean, if a resident group wanted to put together a fundraising effort to. To, to do something, uh, at the college, the college would open their arms and their property. Uh, to build it on. And then we would have that. I mean, that's the, as a density. That's kind of the only place that I see that the residents would. Agree to.
Yeah, just to use real numbers, if I have the numbers right, I just looked up George's email where he said how many ADUs we have built. And my understanding on the numbers are twenty nineteen was eleven, twenty twenty was twenty, twenty twenty one was twenty three. Twenty twenty two, we permitted forty. I don't know if that means we built them. So. Um, let's just assume we built them. If that's accurate, then the average number over those four years is twenty three point five. So it's a twenty four number. And if that, and we're in our. Well, significantly up, but, but if their default is to say that. It's an average of the four years, which is what they've told us.
I never heard that except for.
I can't help that, but that. I've heard it many times.
I've heard it too, but maybe George.
You know, I've gotta, I've gotta, you know, agree with you guys, right?
I, and worst case, and let's say that's, I mean, that's what I've been told, but if that's, I hope it's not right. Because we submitted thirty five.
We did.
And thirty five versus twenty four is, you know, eleven times eight, that's eighty eight different minutes. That's a big number. And, um, so all I'm saying is I think that we'll be able to support a. Greater number and maybe the way that we support it is just by the progression of the increased numbers. But in any case, we, if we can get statements like Monte Sabrina is actively doing from their residents to say they have an interest. In building an ADU, it can only help us.
That's right. But we don't need three hundred, uh, residents saying.
No, but I actually, I, given, given the responses we got, we could get that. I mean, it, you know, we, we could get that.
You have a hand raised. Jeremy Levine.
Okay, we can take a public comment. Uh, Jeremy, are you on the line?
Yes, is, uh, I mean, I didn't know if now was the public comment time. I just wanted to give a comment when, uh, whenever was appropriate. So.
I think it's fine. I mean, we, we're pretty loose about it today. This is a study session, so it's fairly relaxed.
Oh, well, I'm, I'm glad that I could be a part of the session and I will keep it short to, to respect the time and, and the due diligence they put into this process. Um, it is, uh, really good to see the city, the town really think about how. To meet the affordable housing goal and, and think about being proactive with the strategy that you've chosen. Wouldn't necessarily, um, you know, I, I sent in a public comment letter, uh, on, it looks like July twelfth. Where I talked about, uh, ADU calculations and came to a very similar conclusion. And in general, I think talked about the challenge of going with the ADU only strategy. And I think what I'm hearing today is that this council has heard a lot of feedback from the community. A lot of passion from the community and that you're deciding you need to represent your community as best you can. And you're gonna wait until you hear back from HCD before you make too many other decisions. And I think it's important to, you know, you're representing your community the best you can. So I can respect that. HCD will send a letter. And I think it's important to, to look at the housing element as not just about complying with the law. But about really trying to meet the housing need in Atherton. And the housing element requires thinking about this need. With the high housing costs in Atherton. The city is short on teachers, short on municipal workers. It's, I think. I don't need to go through all the motions about how expensive housing is and how important it is, but. Atherton needs preschool teachers too and gardeners and, and other people from all walks of life in the community. And so I hope that the city can come up with a strategy, not just to permit ADUs that comply with RINA, but to. Actually get deed restricted affordable ADUs that are on the rental market. And I think it's gonna be pretty important to demonstrate the city's commitment to, to actually getting deed restricted ADUs on the rental market. in order to, to demonstrate that, that it's gonna be possible to comply with those low-income numbers and the housing element. And so that's when, when we're talking about the housing element, you know, it's partly about complying with the law. And it's partly about thinking about this need, which I think a lot of people, not just in Atherton, but everywhere, don't always think about very much, like just how high the need is and who it's affecting. It's affecting people we care about too. So I would love to see that as a, a bigger part of the conversation when you revisit with the community at large, thinking about, you know, really what the need is. And then, you know, hopefully, based on what you're trying to do, you know, you can come up with an ADU strategy. And if not, there are a lot of ways to minimize the impacts of multifamily housing. And HLC will be happy to talk about what those are when the time comes. So happy to answer any questions and really appreciate your time today to, to engage in this difficult conversation.
Jared, Jeremy Levine is his name. He's, I think he's the executive director of the Housing Leadership Council. He submitted a comment to the council as part of the Housing Element Public Comment Process during the thirty-day period, which is what he referred to. No, no, but anybody can give a comment.
Yeah, we've got several comments.
So let me, let me just say one thing, because we've really talked today, I mean, at least I have, about this whole concept of a default methodology that HCD would use, and that focused on the numbers. And at our last meeting, we had a lot of conversation about the issue of affordability and how difficult it would be for there to be really affordable housing. I, I actually think there's a market for townhouses in Atherton. There, there, there are Atherton residents that have a need. I've heard it. But this is not, if, if somebody buys land in Atherton and builds, whether they build a single-family home, which we all know is very expensive today, or they build multifamily homes, thirty-two on a four-acre parcel, they're gonna be five million dollars apiece. We've heard that. And that's not affordable. That doesn't mean there's not a need. I think, I, I think there's interest in that, but it's, it's not affordability. And I, and I, I haven't spoken to it today, but I do personally believe that there are two ways you can get affordability in Atherton. And neither of them require buying land, because if you have to buy land, you can't have affordability. I don't care how dense it is, you can't have affordability. When land is eight million dollars an acre, it's too expensive to create affordability. But there's two ways you can get affordability. You can have ADUs and people can rent them at affordable rates. And there's a need. We all know it. There's a need in our community. There's a need for service employees. There's a need for teachers. There's a need for students. There, we have a need. And whether, whether we get there or not, I, I mean, I.
I just wanna say, there, that, that need is somehow being met, but it's not being tracked. Okay. Cause I know many residents who are renting out their poolhouse to a student or to a teacher. And, you know, it's below-market rent, but it's not being tracked. Okay. And it has never been tracked. And there's been so many ADUs and poolhouses and above-garage units that were built years ago, when, you know, you just never, never said anything about it, you know. They're back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we sent out a little survey postcard, and people did kind of send back, but there's a lot of anonymous. So I'm just saying, it, it hasn't been tracked. And so when people are saying that we're not meeting the needs.
Well, Bill has addressed it in, in, in saying that we needed to look at what's already out there. And I think the, the concept of, of the plan that I kind of have been referring to is I've referred to the issue of getting sufficient evidence from residents to be able to support the argument for these number of units before HCD. But I think that an absolutely part and parcel of that plan is to go out and try to encourage people to rent these ADUs at below fair market value. And we need, I mean, George and I have had lengthy discussions about this. I mean, this is, but I don't know how people are gonna respond. I, I have heard from my meetings with residents because of this housing element, that there is an interest to make these units available to people and at affordable rates. Now, whether that comes through, we, I think that's part of our responsibility to help create the structure to, to encourage it and incentivize it.
Rick, so one of, one of the examples, when we were talking about having a special hip housing organization that would then place people, we talked about the idea of reaching out to universities and connecting universities. There's a whole bunch of concrete steps we could do now, or we can wait. But if we do them now, we could identify them. And I, I also, still going back to the public schools, think we need to have a task force or somebody research how these other places are getting public school housing projects and how we are not getting in the. So that's one thing I don't know that we need to look at. The letters of submission, somebody's got to be signed with looking at how it's done in other towns and then figure out how we're gonna do it. We could make some first steps on our hip housing arrangement and reach out to the schools so that we can say, we've already done this. Here's our hip housing. This is what they're willing to do. These universities are willing to participate. But who does all that? So do we as a group say, here are the next steps we're gonna do. Can we assign someone? Do we create a task force? How do we make these things happen?
Staff. We just need some direction from the council as to which way you want to go and when you want to go. And then we'll come back with a plan, what that plan costs, and how we implement it.
Well, we identified a bunch in our element already, which include creating that special relationship with HIP and some of those. So do we need to vote on that or?
We're just looking for consensus direction. There's five of you in directions. One isn't a majority. So I, I need, yes, this is something we should do. We should investigate hip housing and how to create a special, unique program. We've already been talking about that behind the scenes, one-on-one brainstorming what that program could look like. We can put something like that together and get that started. We can get a letter out to the community. We can do a survey about ADUs, about rental, about would they be willing to rent it, gather that information. We got to figure out a way, though, to incentivize the actual rental of the unit. I think that's gonna be the hardest part, as well as encouraging the community to communicate information about whether if they indeed have a rental, are they willing to provide that information to the town or not, for whatever reason that might be.
And I think there's a third component for our residents is the, number one. They don't want to have to screen these potential renters, you know, but they want to know they are reputable, secure, you know, have had security checks, because if they're, you're gonna have them live on your property, you know. And a lot of our residents don't want to go through that process because, you know, they're too busy doing other things. But they want that feeling of being assured that whoever they're gonna live, live on their property has been screened. Now, who would take on that liability?
Well, the schools already do it. They already do it. Stanford has a housing department. I'm sure, I'm sure Menlo College has it as well. So they do screen. They have boards. We've rented to Stanford students before, and we check on their background check. They background check us to be listed there. They make sure you really have a place and it's clean and safe and all that. But we need to establish that as a relationship, and that's not that hard.
No, hip housing already does that. They already have the personnel to do that. They've got programs to do that. We just need to develop that partnership.
But I think, I think that's a little bit downstream. The first thing we've got to do is we need to have the, the all-community meeting. We need to start talking to people about ADUs and follow, you know, what Rick was saying. Start finding out whether or not we already have housing, housing built that we didn't count or that we don't know about. And start finding out who's renting and who isn't, and what income levels they are. Then, once we are building new houses, then I believe, then we can do this matching and we can collect the information. George and I have talked about a way to do that. I even sent him a system and that he could implement. But really, the job, we, we want to have the liability go to somebody else. We don't want the town to be responsible. They put somebody there and you broke into your house. You'd be very upset. So what we want to do is have that liability go to another organization. There's one or two that are in the county that do matching. Either put people in a bedroom in your house or put, you know, put somebody in your poolhouse. So there's already two organizations that do that. We just need to collect the information and go up there. But that's after. It's not now.
I think that there are two things we should authorize staff to do on this. And then I think we should move to the discussion committee. One is, I think we should authorize staff to hire to do the building department review of how many poolhouses there are and how many poolhouses there are that need whatever, a kitchen or a bathroom in order to qualify as an ADU. How many fully-built accessory dwelling units are that are ADUs but aren't part of this database of whatever a hundred or a hundred and twenty-seven that we already have. So I think that's one thing staff could start to do now. I think secondly, staff can start to define what this program would be, including use of hip housing, but and the outreach to the residents, because it's gonna be all one big program that's going to involve trying to encourage and incentivize residents to build or convert to establish ADUs that we can use in our housing element and to rent that housing at affordable rates. And that's a whole plan that, you know, staff's gonna take a few different stabs at and get a bunch of feedback from, both from the council and from the community. And I think we should start that now. And if we need to, you know, outsource to get that going, we, we, we need to start to begin to define. And I think this committee we're gonna talk about next is, will be part of helping with that. But I think staff can launch to start to put the structure together now.
And you know, since staff isn't building the Newtown Center anymore.
They have all this time, all this time.
You just need a new project.
But also, also plan for the, have the full community meeting within that, because that's the way we're gonna start the communication. So that when we send letters out, people might actually look at them.
Yep.
Which is one of the things that, you know, some, a lot of our letters said, why didn't you ever tell us about all this stuff?
That's the truth.
You know, so we, yeah.
Make it bigger than a postcard.
Yeah.
Like, like a trifle.
So I think that's true. I, I think actually we want residents to be looking forward to this letter coming. There's gotta be a lot of work done for, we get to that point. I mean, it took a lot to get residents engaged. And we've now got people paying attention to this issue.
Look how many are here.
I mean, we have more people in this meeting than we would normally have in a meeting in a study group.
Yeah, you know. Can I ask one question back on the letters of intent? Do those, what form does that have to take? Could we use a survey and would that be something that people would accept? Like, we could do a mail chip off out of our, we have accounts of emails. Could we send out the survey and would that qualify as data enough for them? Or do we literally have to have, you know, ask people to write a letter and submit a public document? What would be accepted? I'm trying to ask.
What would HCD accept? I don't know. I don't know for sure. But any information is good information to obtain. So if we start with a letter, and then we could also follow up with a survey. People may respond one or the other.
This survey would be an easy, easier thing to do theoretically than getting, I don't know.
Theoretically, they haven't been successful in Atherton.
As Rick, as Rick said, you know, another, another community has already done this. Why don't we start with what they've got? That cuts staff time and it gets things going.
Yeah. Yeah. Let's go. Let's just do it.
So is that good in direction? Okay. Okay. So I, I, it, it's five after five. I'm sorry, I've got a, I've got a hard stop at six, because I've got to get a kid to the airport by six-thirty. So it, let's move on to item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is an opportunity for the council to consider the appointment of a standing committee of the council, which you could do this evening by approval of the council. It's agenda items written that way. As well as direct staff to begin the creation of a resident committee and to develop what that charter might be. This is gonna be a healthy conversation if you intend to go this route. The other option in the, depending on how you foresee what that committee will do and when it would start. If you're gonna do an appointment, we do an advert advertise for residents to do that. If you're looking at someone to participate in the housing element, you got to think about where they're gonna come from in the community. And then so you get a diverse perspective. Then those residents need to be Brown Act trained, so they can begin their first meeting. Once they have their first meeting, after they're appointed, then we advertise when those future meetings would be. So there's a length of time in advance before that occurs. Don't know how long that would take, but on average, it's about a month and a half to two months worth of time as a guess. Now, the other option for community engagement that's been discussed is to use the whole council as that group that goes out to the community, has a town hall meeting, the whole council's there. It's advertised as a public city council meeting, feedbacks with the whole council. Whole council gets to participate, and you could have successive meetings of the council in that way. And because you're all here today, you could actually pick dates, and we could begin advertising, sending out giant postcards and such for residents to be aware of these meetings when they're coming up. Or another option is to use an ad hoc committee of the city council to work with staff. That's not a Brown Act group. That's just an ad hoc group. The mayor would appoint that. And then we could still have those community engagement meetings as the full council. But then staff has the resource of a behind-the-scenes ad hoc committee of the city council to, to bounce ideas off of moving forward in, in between those council meeting dates. So that's what this item is about, in interest of brevity for the council discussion.
Well, I, I believe with regards to the housing where we are right now, you know, the decision comes down to really five people. That's who the responsibility will be. And I think that we should leave it that way. But have more open meetings such as this, where people are coming and getting engaged. We should do a better job of, of communicating that and inviting people. However, if it's that we should have one or two council members as a subcommittee, that would help staff move forward. That, that would be fine with me too. I do think having a community group to think about and to come up with ways that we can communicate about ADUs, about SB nine law splits, find out about rentals, those type of things. I think having people who are in the community to, to participate in that, I think, would be extremely valuable. Cause they got great ideas that, you know, you know, we're in the, we're in the weeds in many cases. And, you know, they'll come up with better ideas. And so, you know, I, I, I think like we, like we just discussed in the last item, I think that the community people could participate in, in helping verify what we've said we were going to do and, and get more, more people engaged. I think that would be good. If we were to do anything else other than that, then I think that, as you pointed out, George, we would need to have probably seven or eight or seven or a nine, since we would have a odd number of, of people that were geographically spread throughout the town. I think that was, is gonna be hard to regroup that. So that we would have a balanced group of people that would be in each of the every, each of the areas to, to speak on behalf of their neighbors. So, so that's really my, my two cents. So as we discussed last time, I think, or just last item. I think having a community group would be extremely helpful in helping, help us move things forward and, and be at these meetings and things like that. However, the decision on the housing is, you know, it comes down to the people sitting at this, this table. And I think that we, we should probably, and I think we've already spoken where we want to be. So I think that that's where we should leave it at this time. That's how I feel.
I, I think we probably all agree that the public forums that are announced to everybody and everyone shows up and that we're all there are the number one approach. But on the issue of having a community, a community group, has there been one that stepped forward? And do we have people who are interested? And I, I, I think it's hard to figure out what you were saying, all the different neighborhoods and the different perspectives.
I know, I know of several, you know, neighbors and neighborhood groups that are kind of forming on their own that are, you know, working together and everything. And I think that if we did anything other than let that other than just encourage that to happen organically, if we tried to formalize it, we get into the Brown Act ADU, we get into having to choose. uh formalize it, we get into the Brown Act issue, we get into having to choose here and there.
Yeah.
We don't want to do that. We want, I me, I I think that what's happening, there are groups out there. There are people that are having neighborhood meetings on their own. Um, trying to address this issue and even on on a higher level, I mean, address it, you know, going after the HCD, you know, um, you know, uh authority in in a way. But um, I I agree that I think that having the entire council involved uh is a unifying um approach. And if we can have these um group meetings and and town hall meetings where we can all have a voice to talk to people individually and as a group uh, you know, publicly noticed, I think then then we don't have a brown act issue and uh it just becomes more unifying.
If there were, sorry to interrupt, but uh in your scenario that you're discussing with these community groups out there, if there were an ad hoc mem- uh group of the city council to work with staff, that team could go to these various community.
I can see that you're advocating for an ad.
That's just a.
You know. I I I personally, at this stage of the game, I do not, I I would not um be in favor of an ad hoc committee.
I wouldn't either. Bob, did you?
I said I wouldn't either.
Yeah.
It's way, way too important to pigeonhole a couple of people and expect it to get done to everybody's satisfaction.
One, one way I I look at it and I'm, I'm really asking the question. I don't have a position here. Uh, but I think about, well, what have we done in the past? What's a model? What, what, what makes the most sense given experience that we've had? The absolute, there's no question, clear biggest thing we've ever done in the history of this town we are sitting in. It was the biggest thing we ever did. And the way we did it is we set up a citizens committee. Now, building a town center is different than forming a program. So I'm not advocating that we do this, but I'm just giving the history. We, we, we built a residence group. Uh, there's two things I think we did at the town center that were really important, and they both involved getting a lot of members of the town engaged in an issue that was going to cost them a lot because it's our most expensive thing by an order of magnitude or or more. And uh and is going to influence them and their children and their grandchildren. So what we did was we built a citizens committee of seven members of the public that the council elected. What George was saying is it would be possible to do that and we could identify seven different areas of town that are quite distinct, that somebody could represent each one of those areas of town. It would take as some real work, a couple of months, I think you're right, to put that together. The other, and that's one possible way. Um, the other thing that we did uh through, when we did the town center, is in the course of conceptualizing the master plan for what we were going to do, we had about seven different meetings in town in people's homes, in very different areas of town. And, you know, so that this would be one in Lindenwood, one in Victoria Manor, one uh 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 above Alameda, one in Lloydton Park, uh, one near the town center. That's exactly what we did. We had seven different meetings. They, and and we had what? Uh, from twenty to forty people come to each of those meetings. Uh, and and at those meetings, our consultant for the master plan presented the concepts and people responded to it. And there were some changes that were made as a result of that interaction. Um, so just having that as background, I had kind of thought, well, maybe it makes the most sense to establish this kind of a standing committee that would be a Brown Act committee, just as the CCAC was a Brown Act committee.
So, Rick, I can see where you're coming from on that. But if you really it's apples and onions, you know, you can't use that same model for this situation. For one thing, that model spanned seven years of time.
True.
Okay.
Well, the committee was at least half of that.
Well, but there had been a committee before, there had been a committee before, there had been the Blue Ribbon Task Force, there had been the, you know, there had been several iterations for a dozen years. Okay. This is very, very different. This is, this is, this is timely. This is now, this is everybody, it, this really, really affects every resident like personally in their home, on their property. Okay? This, many people, I mean, it's a benefit to the town and to residents. But it doesn't speak to them, you know, on a daily basis. So I really have to respectfully disagree with your analysis about it. And I think that at this point in time, I think the best thing to do is to, you know, work together as a team and not just have um an ad hoc committee and then try to get, you know, residents from various uh locations. I think that, you know, if a resident wants to have a group meeting at their home, that's fine, you know? I mean, that's what people are doing actually in lots of uh situations. But that's, that's my personal feeling about it. And I I understand how passionate you are, and I know that when, and I was part of that at the whole time. And I know that the other council members, there were other people on council who were not very happy about it in the end.
Well, and we're not as involved. I mean, you and I were the representatives on that.
Exactly. And I just don't think that that's what I want to do.
Well, if I, if I, if I could mention this, that, that committee built something that was just here.
Yeah.
You are talking about having a committee decide that there could be something that you don't want or your neighbors don't want built right next to you or recommended. And I think that's a broader issue than having, you know, deciding how to plan and what to put into a library and how big this building should be and what potential usage could be here. Yeah, you, and you engaged all these people that lived out here, near here, and that was, that was great. And the way that that whole thing worked was terrific. However, this is for the whole town. And I just don't see that a committee can speak for the whole town. We have been elected. Bob has been appointed, but he's doing a great job.
Well, we elected him.
Yeah, right. And so, so yeah, I just think it's different, Rick. And I, I, you know, I, 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 I appreciate your, you know, your interest in that, but I just, I think it's different. I do, I do. And I I'm not in favor of it.
I think the big meetings are obviously important. I think we underestimate how contentious those may end up being. We all sat here assuming ADUs is our solution and that we're representing our public. I went to a private event where there were thirty people and they were very against ADU. They were not blaming us. They were blaming the laws that allow it to be built for feet from the fence. But we open it up to a public meeting, it could get very contentious. So I think there is some merit beforehand testing the waters on ideas, because how we message and how we get that information across in those meetings will be crucial. And if we do get in the position that no, nobody wants to address, if we get in the position that we, that our, our proposal is rejected, we are going to have to very quickly pivot and gather information from people on their views and how to present the alternative ideas. We, as Bob said, we're not doing that right now. We're saying this is what we're going with, but that's, you know, that could happen. So.
Well.
I get, wait, I'm sorry. What I was trying to say with that long-winded thing, is it maybe collecting information from people in smaller venues and getting other ideas and finding a venue to do that? Because once you open it up to the whole community and you're packing your room with five hundred people, half of which are angry, it may not, we may not be as useful as we want them to be. I mean, I think it's really, really important, but it may not be as useful. I have no idea how it will play out.
I think it will be useful. I I I really do.
Well, of course, that's our thing.
Because bringing all of those people together, I mean, if they have divergent views, you know, then they have an opportunity to talk about it.
I agree with you. I'm not saying not to do that. I think it's imperative that we have these community meetings and we stage the first one to be right after we get our feedback from, from, but what I'm saying is waiting for that public venue. We should, we have to go in that with all our messaging of what we're going to say. And it would be useful to find another venue to get feedback from people other than waiting for a big public meeting is all I'm saying. I don't know what that is.
There's always emails. I mean, people can email us, you know, email the town council.
They have.
I know.
Email.
Yeah.
But she's saying, you know, how can people give, you know, give their opinions to us? I mean, they continue to have opinions, you know, as we go along. So um, our emails are always open, George. So.
You, go ahead, Bob.
Is it appropriate to hear what these people have to say? I'm I'm kind of curious.
Yeah, uh, uh, let me say one more thing before we do that. I'm, I'm happy to. Uh, so I wasn't advocating that we have the same kind of committee that we had with the civic center. I was just giving the analogy of that's what we've done before when we did this, which was a, a big deal.
Yeah.
And and a game changer for Atherton. I think that if we go out, if, and whether I'm on the council or not, we'll find out, but uh, that, and and the council authorizes the building of townhomes like had been proposed previously. Uh, it's going to be as big a deal for the town as this town center is. I absolutely believe that. And I don't think we would have gotten three hundred emails from residents if they didn't believe that. Now, it may be, I think, I think it's plausible that ADUs aren't what residents want. Um, that's what those letters said in response to the townhome concept, but I think we do need to find out. Now, I I don't feel like we have to have that kind of a committee to do that. I, I, I agree that when we did the town center, there were differences between the two of us that were deeply involved in that and the other three members of the council. And we changed that at the point we went from conceptual, a little after conceptual, but at about that point uh to bring it back to the whole council. And this is a different deal. This is a shorter term deal. It, but my concept is, is that we build a program, because I guess I do think that the residents want ADUs because that's what I heard. And uh, if we, to make that program successful, I think is absolutely going to require resident involvement. I don't think we can do it ourselves. Now, I would be very comfortable with us deciding we're going to have a series of meetings. We're going to do it ourselves as the core, which I think is what, what's been advocated. I, I'm, I'm okay with that. I think that there's real merit in that. Uh, but I think we have to have meetings at different segments of the town.
That's fine.
I think, I think we should try to identify however many there are, seven or eight segments of town. And we should try to hold a meeting in each of those areas. I don't think we have to do all of that before we get the feedback from HCD, but I think we have to do that before we respond to HCD.
Absolutely.
And and maybe what we should do before we get anything from HCD is we should have at least one public meeting of the whole where we talk about a strategy. And maybe the strategy is we'll go out and we'll have these uh meetings in neighborhoods. And and certainly the neighborhood groups in those areas that have them will help pull people together for those meetings.
So can I ma- make a little suggestion, kind of
Go ahead.
Building on that concept about neighborhood meetings. I mean, if people want, you know, to go out and have neighbor instead of having all five of us go to that one meeting like in Lindenwood, I mean, you know, we could separate and then we don't have to have a Brown Act. We don't have to, right?
Uh, well, if you're.
To have a publicly noticed meeting.
That's, that was the suggestion of having an ad hoc committee with just two of you that would do that. But if you're going to separate out individually and then you're going to potentially. You, well, the, the challenge is you two go to this meeting.
No, no.
And I think the Brown Act issue, correct me if I'm wrong, the Brown Act issues, we just have to agendize it and announce it. If we had set up seven different meetings of the council in seven different areas of town, anybody that wants to go could go. It would be a formal.
Yes.
Special.
ADA HS access and all that sort of stuff. But I think what you're suggesting is if there's a private community group that wants a council member to come and attend and speak.
Yeah.
That, what I'm saying is there's some caution in that, because if, if, if two of you are at that community meeting because you're speaking and and Bob shows up and then you provide perspective and opinions, you can't talk to any of these other three until the next public meeting when you report out the.
Okay. Well, I mean, there's complications.
That's, there's complications.
Yeah. So I was, I was.
It's going to rotate.
Then envisioning two of us going to the same one or whatever, but, you know, coming and then reporting. And we can report back to you and you can disseminate the information. So it's not like it's impossible.
No, it's, it's.
Share that.
It's not impossible. You just have to be cognizant of what the caution is.
Are you saying we couldn't have that meeting in a house where there's a step?
Uh, if you're going to be meeting, if the council is going to be meeting at a alternate location, it needs to be ADA accessible.
So that's different from what we had when we did the town center.
Yeah, you didn't have the whole council there. You didn't have an ad hoc.
Why don't we do, as, as was suggested, you know, if, if, if a council member goes to a neighborhood meeting or to a group meeting, that it's, it's pertinent that they go ahead and write like a trip report, send it to George and let George.
I think that's an easy way to get around all of this. I mean, don't you, Vice Mayor? I mean, I, I don't think it's impossible.
I don't either.
It's not impossible, just awareness.
So if we had the, if we had the overall meeting, if we had the overall meeting.
It's a sensitive issue.
If we invited everybody to the meeting, the whole town, and we said, we want to have these neighborhood meetings and we're willing to council members are willing to come out, please let us know. And then we go.
Yeah, you just have to be, so, so for example, Bill goes to a meeting. He then provides me with a report. I can't attach that report and send it to the whole council. What I could do is summarize. Say, we had a member of the council attend this community group meeting. This is what that information was without referencing which council member attended or what they may have said or not said at the meeting. And the community groups need to be careful about that, too.
I was going to say, maybe a community, the, one of the members of the community group could, you know, debrief you also.
But right now, community groups can meet and do meet and can invite members of the council to those meetings, and they do.
They just can't share information between councils.
And so you just have to manage that, just like we do always. We are very careful around the Brown Act. And we don't, we're, we're, we, I mean, when I talked to you about what we talked about regarding the subject, we were very careful not to talk about things that we talked to somebody else about and
That's great.
And I think we're, we're.
Bob wants to say something.
Go ahead, Bob.
What's your purpose of trying to send one person or just to be efficient?
Uh, no, well, so that you don't have a Brown Act uh with uh council members.
I know, but if, if all of us go to the meeting, we don't have, and it's agendized, we don't have a problem.
Then it has to be ADA compliant according to George.
There's also.
That's the only.
ADA compliant, Jesus.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, there's all these other rules that.
He meant it's a good thing.
Well. I, but, but I think we've had a good discussion. I, I'd like to take public comment and, and I think that just to summarize, it sounds like we'd like to be a committee of the whole on this housing issue.
Yes.
We don't, the, the council doesn't want to set up an ad hoc committee on the housing issue.
Not right now.
Uh, we may find that at some point we want something to comment on something to help staff with, but at this point, that, and and we'd like to have not with Sandy, having a general meeting as, you know, as soon as it's reasonable to advocate it and get it out, we'd, we'd like to have a townwide meeting like we had in April. But I, but my sense, and correct me if y'all think I'm wrong, is that we'd like to have meetings in each area of the town on this housing issue. I think that's the only way we're going to get a lot of residents out in person.
If there are a resident who would open their home and invite their little community to that, which I know that there are residents who would do that.
And just as there were with the town center.
Exactly. But I know.
And and staff can put together some thoughts on that and make a suggestion to us about how to make that best.
I called those people up and said, would you do this?
Zach already had one, and that was the one that I went to. Okay. All right. And what'd you say? Um, I did not do much talking because there was an advocate group and they were really focusing on it on fighting this, the laws that are in place on the state level.
Yeah, so there's.
So it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't our level, but it was, it was, they were raising money and they were trying to get advocates to fight the state state laws so that we would pull back the control of housing back to the local level. So they were fighting on the, in, in my opinion.
Solve our problem.
But it, it will eventually. And I mean, as long as we could stall, if that could happen, that would be awesome. But.
It's not within our timeline here.
It's not going to solve our immediate problems, but out of that did come the anti-ADU sentiment, which is not what we've been hearing in other environments. So.
But that was more anti-SB nine than ADU. That was. But that was more anti-SB nine than ADU. That was, Rick, quite.
People don't want.
And I, I was at that meeting before you arrived.
Yeah, well, no, no. One of the big take home was nobody wants ADUs four feet from their fence. And there's nothing we can do about that. That's law, that's a law that's been put out by the state, not us, so that was an issue.
I think basically, residents don't want. Uh, the expansion of any kind of development in town.
Yeah.
Whether it's the lot split or the ADUs, and the lot split is got a lot of unintended consequences because then you can build. Right next to your, you know, property line and stuff, which is, you know, and we have no control over that. That was one of the reasons why. If we, I'm just saying, if we did an overlay with some.
We would have control.
We would have control over the setbacks, the height, the density, all that stuff, the town would. But now the state has control and then this whole ADU thing, the only control we have about ADUs is, you know. With our buildable area, which we, you know, expanded that to encourage it.
Increasing the number of living units in the applicant by fifteen percent is a. Is broad.
Nise is a problem, I think, all of our citizens.
Yeah, and people wanna have their privacy and they wanna have the quiet.
Yeah.
Use of their um.
Property.
Their property, which is when we talk about the, the noise ordinance in a month. Let's remember that we wanna have the quiet use of our enjoyment of our property, quiet use of our properties. Even after ten o'clock.
Quiet enjoyment.
Wanna have that first town hall community engagement meeting and so staff can begin advertising for that meeting.
Like.
Beginning of October.
October timeframe.
When would you like to do that?
Of October, beginning of October.
Yeah, beginning of October, it's great, cause school's going.
Pleasure of the council.
Yeah, that's what we're telling you.
If we could pick a date.
I'd say either the last week of September or first week of October is good.
Not the last week of September.
No, 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 October, mid-October. Not October first.
Why don't you look at the calendar, you can kind of poll people on that. But let, let, let me see, Bob had suggested we take public comment a while ago.
Yes.
Um, and I think that's a good idea. Let me see if there's any public comment either in the room or online.
Nothing online as far as I can see.
Okay, I don't see any public comment. So if somebody comes up with a comment that you have as we move on, that's no problem.
In on the community stuff, cause you have a community, you have a community group. Are we allowed to ask questions? No.
Nobody could hear you unless you're speaking to a microphone.
You can grab the wireless one.
I don't think he wants to, yeah, okay.
It's okay, you don't, you're not, you don't need to. So I think. Let, let me just say, I, you know, what, I mean, there's an election in November.
Yep.
And so there's a campaign between now and November and community groups normally meet during the election. And um, hopefully they will meet and this issue should come up, so. That I think airing this issue with community groups, this is, this is a time where this is naturally going to happen.
Right, right, right. So the last election in twenty twenty, we were in lockdown COVID, so we didn't have any community meetings.
That's right, that's right.
I remember.
The last one was four years ago.
No, oh, yeah, yeah, right, four years ago, right.
Where, where we didn't actually have an election.
Election four years ago.
We didn't have four candidates.
People got a free ride.
Right. So.
Those are, and privately, previously to that, two, two people got a free ride.
That's right.
But let's not mention that.
Twenty fourteen was the last active election that we had in Atherton, that was eight years ago. Okay.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Picture sent to the airport on time.
No problem.
Good.
Thank you.